Yeah, we got six o'clock now. I'd like to call the meeting of the South Thompson Planting Board to order. And first order of business, any comments from the public? Six o'clock, like to call the South Thompson Planting Board of May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five to order. Uh, first thing on the agenda is any public comments, items not on the agenda? Is there any public comments at all that somebody like to make? Okay. Any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Okay, uh, next thing would be to approve the minutes from February twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Any discussion about that? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes in a second?
The motion will approve the minutes on point.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, the motion say any further discussion on that? Because not, okay, so let's go ahead and take a vote to approve the minutes. Um, see here, I've lost you on the picture here, Travis?
Yes.
Okay. Gabe?
Yes.
Maura?
You don't need me because you have a.
You don't need me, okay, and I vote yes to, that's three.
And I'm Val, I'm here.
Val, okay, Val, how about you, sir?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, there's no old business right now, and then we're on to new business. Uh, we have a request from Travis Wilson Construction Company to amend his rock quarry permit standards. Um, any discussion on that?
Oh, yeah, you want me to speak on it?
Yes, if you'd like to, Travis.
Yep, yeah, we're just, uh, looking to amend the amount of blasts that we can have, uh, per year. Uh, we're not looking to produce more material, just, we need to produce different types of material, so that requires different blast types. Uh, and as in the letter states, like currently I don't have a limit on how much material I can blast, just on the number of blasts. And I propose putting a limit on how much material I could blast in a year, but up in the number of blasts to five, just to give me flexibility to make the different materials, because right now, um, yeah, we have to blast a certain pattern to get crushable rock, and blast a separate pattern to get, uh, larger wall rock for seawalls, which we weren't aware we were gonna have to do until we started getting into the rock, and it's very, uh, shaly and broken up, so it requires a little bit of different technique.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Anybody from the public or anything?
I'm against it, uh, Debbie Cholbers. If, if that could be noted in the minutes.
Um, what did you have to note in the minutes? Your email?
Thank you, bud.
Your email?
What you said.
What did you want noted in the minutes?
I'm having trouble hearing yours.
I don't know. Each one to have noted that she's against it, and I've already written.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I have a comment, if, if, okay?
Yes, you can.
Uh, so my name is Bill Batty, I'm a deacon at Harmony Bible Church. One of the things, um, I, I have a little bit of a concern, one is, um, how much data do we have to work with, uh, about the blast that have happened thus far? Um, I seem to recall from an earlier meeting that Travis said something to the effect of Jake Barber blasts three or four times a year, and he's way bigger than I am, so two should be plenty.
Uh, he, he blasts like eight times a year.
And unfortunately, um, I tried very hard to get from the town a copy of those minutes, uh, or a copy of the recording. Um, and they unfortunately couldn't provide that to me, so we have to go by our memories. Um, and my memory was not eight. Uh, but be that as it may. Personally, I, I, I think I'd rather see a little more data, uh, actually, I haven't seen any data, um. Travis, you agreed to put, uh, some kind of seismic device, uh, on your building. Um, does that show any data from the, the blast or blast?
We have all the blast, the town has all the blast reports with the seismic information. I don't know how to read it, but.
Is that something that could be made available?
Yeah, it's po, it's public information, hardly if you stop in, I can take the sound at the office as well.
Okay, so, um, as a, as in a butter, you know, I guess we have a concern for, we, we did have the inspection done before the blasting, you had one blast, is that right? Or two?
Done two this year.
Two. Um, I, I don't know, part of me just, just, just thinks maybe we should. I don't know, I, I, I'd hate to see going from two blasts to, to five.
So, Bill, to clarify, um, we look to produce about sixty thousand yards of material a year regardless, so it's either gonna be two thirty thousand yard blasts, which is much more impactful, or five up to twelve thousand yard blasts. Which, that's, that's my, um, kind of deal with the town is, it's, on one hand, it's easier for me to manage five smaller blasts, but it's also less impactful to surrounding areas to have smaller blasts versus two larger blasts.
At this point, because I haven't seen any data on the blast that we've already had, um, I, I, I wouldn't dare comment. And e- even if I see the data, I, like you, I don't know that I'm gonna be able to read it. Um, uh, I don't know, it just seems on, uh, to me, I, I think it's somewhat unfortunate that the plan is relatively new, and already we're asking to amend it, and I, I just feel like we haven't had a, had a lot of time to figure out what the original plan is producing for data, let alone what's gonna happen if we change it. Um, I don't know if there are others there in the audience, I know, I, I feel like there was also some, uh, I haven't had any problem with noise, the, the church hasn't, and, uh, just by way of, of full disclosure, um, I, I know that your blasting says that, you know, it can't, can't be done during, um, or it has to be done during daylight hours and can't be done on Sunday, and so far at the church, we've, we've had, to my knowledge, no issues up to this point. Um, but I, I think perhaps there was some concern about noise, and I, I can't speak to that. Um, I guess, uh, uh, I'll yield at this point, just, I, I too would like to be on record as having some concern.
Just to ease your mind, Bill, I have it here, and all the readings that the blast company is, is saying that they're within range and they're okay. I'm not an expert, but their paperwork shows that.
And i- is that something where if I email you, I can get a copy of it?
You, Terry gave it to me, so she could probably email.
I'll email Terry, thank you.
Yeah. That's, but it's here, it's, it's all written out. Like you say, it's a little bit, Travis could probably show the all, this one, another page shows all the eight feet apart, how, where they put the charges and, and so forth, and how big they are. So that's, it's available, what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Question from the audience, sir?
Go ahead.
Um, on February fifth, the date of the blast, I had some plumbing damage, um, I have it documented, and it, uh, sixteen hundred dollars, and I called and I've spoken with, uh, Chris Scott on the seventh of this month, and he promised to send me a claim form, and he has not yet. Um, the blast blew off, uh, a plumbing part of my, um, septic pump, and I didn't catch it in time, and I have one electric bill over five hundred dollars, I have another bill the following month for over three hundred dollars. I called and had two lengthy conversations with C N P, and they have documented when that happened, and he said February fifth was when it started. I had two plumbers down there, and they said, they, they both said the same thing, that, that that's what caused that. So, good luck to me chasing my money. And besides, where I live, nineteen Coles End Road, I hissed up all the time, my quiet enjoyment, I don't, I don't have any. And in this letter from Christopher Scott, it said before the blast, they were gonna do X amount of long horns prior to, and I haven't heard that before the two blasts. I think it's a very, I'm totally against it, we're gonna have more problems and more damage. That's my feeling.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, um, yes, um, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Okay, wait a minute, let me put my video on.
Good to see you.
I was trying to spare you while watching me eat dinner. So I've got just some procedural concerns, um, and if, if I'm, um, not understanding the facts correctly, somebody can, you know, inform me, but, um, my first concern is that, I remember very clearly that when uh, Mr. Wilson was going through the permitting process, and there was a meeting with the planning board, and then there was an, a public hearing, and he was asked, um, how much are you gonna blast, and how much of this stuff are you gonna need, and he said very clearly, I'm only blasting enough for my own needs in my construction and landscaping business. And now, on his website, this stuff is up for sale, and I expect that is why he needs to do more blasting. So he may be saying now that, well, selling this stuff is part of my business, but that is not the impression that he wanted the town to have when he was explaining to us why it was okay to have a quarry. The other thing I'm concerned about is that there were conditions, um, that Mr. Wilson was to meet in operating the quarry process, and that included notifying the CEO ten days ahead of any blast, which would have allowed for setting up equipment to check the decibel level or whatever else monitoring might have been done. So, I understand, based on what was discussed at a previous select board meeting, that that did not happen with this latest blast. And Mr. Wilson said something to the effect of, and again, I might be misremembering, that, well, you know, they had a cancellation and an opening, and there just wasn't time, so we rushed in and got it. That's not a good reason for saying, I'm gonna skip the part about I have to give notice, if you've gotta give ten days notice, and the blasting company doesn't give you enough time to do that, you say, no, thank you, we'll need to reschedule. So, with this kind of thing happening, with what seems to me a misleading representation of the scope of the intended quarry, and not complying with the not very onerous requirements for operating the quarry, I don't think that Mr. Wilson has demonstrated the kind of good faith that justifies giving him a, an expansion, a totally unexpected expansion of his permit, a mere six months after he came in and told us what he wanted the permit for.
I, I agree, ten days would have been, oh, I agree, ten days would be prudent to tell, but they can do it less. They can notify the CEO less on.
Well, he did not notify the CEO at all before the blast, so nobody was in a position to monitor it, it just happened.
We don't, as a planning board, uh, we don't have, that's out of our lane, we don't do the enforcement part. So that's up to the selectmen with the code enforcement or to, uh, if they wanna find Mr. Wilson or start Mr. Wilson, that's not the planning board's job, but thank you, though.
But it is the planning, yes, thank you, but it is the planning board's role to decide whether this expansion is merited, and one thing I would think you could take into consideration is, uh, the behavior of the applicant, and whether his, uh, whether, whether it's completely ignoring the rule or, uh, bending the truth, if this is the kind of thing that's happened already, perhaps the planning board is justified in giving a much closer look before considering any expansion to his permit. And that is, that, that would be the planning board's bailiwick.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have a comment?
I'd like to say something. Um, I'd like to support, um, Sandra Wallace's comments, my name is Ivan Garrett, I live on Smokey Lane. And I was listening to Mr. Travis Wilson basically mentioning some of the things he'd like to do. And to me, it really, to me, somebody should, you should have a formal business plan, exactly, you know, what the company's goals are, what the strategies are to achieve these goals, and the timeframe for its achievements. I bring this up because there's some inconsistency at, at Travis's, uh, company. Last October, and I'm just basically echoing Sandra Wallace's comments, Mr. Wilson was satisfied with two blasts per year. Only seven months later, he wanted, he wants up to five blasts. In October, with regard to the material le, uh, yielded from the blast, Mr. Wilson, and I quote, basically said, we said, we just, we're just supplying ourselves, we're, we're just doing this to suffice ourselves. Now he's selling his crushed gravel, crushed stone, and blasted rock on Facebook and on his three, four, one Rock4Web site. At the October meeting, I asked Mr. Wilson what he anticipated would be the lifespan of the quarry. And he said, and I quote, probably fifteen years. So given, given up to five blasts per year for fifteen years, if we're actually truly think that, that the, the quarry's gonna run last that long, we're talking about nine hundred thousand cubic yards of rock being crushed, screened, and all that, and the accompanying noise, the blasts, which are over a hundred and twenty decibels. And obviously, the, the, the ground vibration would have a profound negative effect on the structural integrity of the homes, and it's going to affect the quality of life of the community. And I can elaborate on what I mean by quality of life, if anyone's interested in that. So, my question is, is the planning board really sensitive to the community's uh, needs, and, 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 and are they, are, is the planning board really concerned about the, about the community? And, and the people living a- around the, the, the blasts?
I think if they were sensitive to the community's needs, they, they, they are sensitive because they're here on their own time. And some of them have been on for years and years volunteering for the community, so they are sensitive to the community's needs, for sure.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think you are, uh, sensitive, because these blasts, uh, really affect a lot of, of things, they affect the, as I say, the integrity of the homes, the, the foundations, uh, of, of, of the buildings, uh, uh, they affect the quality of life, you know, all of a sudden you get a sudden, you hear this sudden blast, and, uh, you know, it affects the kids, the dogs, you, you have a hard time, you know, being outside and, and, and enjoying nature and resting and things like that, because, uh, you have all these, uh, sounds of the, 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 the crushing of the, of the machines, and, and then the, the, uh, the other thing is, is that the, the community, the people around there, they're always concerned about what's gonna happen to, uh, to my building, what's gonna happen to, to, uh, door life, because it's, 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 it's a major disruption, so that's what I'm talking about is, and, and I'm, I'm not real, I'm, I'm not really getting a vibration from the planning board that they're understanding about, that they're understanding about this.
Well, I, I live in the area very close, just like you, so, but what, what the planning board is tasked with, what, what the planning board is tasked with is this, we have an ordinance, we have areas where industrial is allowed, we have areas where it's not allowed, so we have to, as long as they follow the state mandates, and, uh, stay within their operating hours that we put on their, uh, performance standards, actually, the state does their own performance standards. So we have, I, my job is to say, is this an allowed use in this area? Are they, we give them a set of performance standards, and as long as they stay within their, uh, state standards, or any standards that we put on as a town, then, uh, they're free to operate in those areas. You know, that's, that's what I'm saying, we, it's kind of more cut and dry for us, and it always has been on the planning board. You have to look at the area, is it allowed use in that zone? Or it's not allowed used? So we can't refuse people if it's an allowed use, and they're, have, have all their permits and all their, uh, everything is on the up and up in a row, you know? So that's basically what I'm trying to tell you.
So, I'd like to speak again to that.
You know, the noise and everything else, pardon me?
When you're done, I'd like to speak again to what you're saying.
Yeah, I understand what I'm saying, we, we just go by the ordinance, we go by the, use our performance standards, and we fall, and the, basically, the, that type of operation is run by the D E P. They have all their restrictions, all their setbacks, all their, uh, requirements for, you know, we have the noise, but they have, they have all their, their things, as far as telling them, are they, are they expanding the area? I don't know, I don't, he can do five acres at a time, has he gone over his five acres? That's the things we need to know without re- reclamation, and then open up more five acres or whatever he needs to do. We don't tell them how to operate, they run under the state permits and state standards. So alls we decide is whether it's allowed there or not allowed there.
Dare speak, or you, oh, sorry.
No, I'm just.
Sorry, oh, darn, you froze. Um, on my screen, Herb is frozen.
He's frozen for us too, Sandra, but we can hear you in the room.
Okay, so what I would say to what Herb just said is, what he's describing is the process they went through seven months ago in deciding that they, uh, had no basis not to give the permit for the, for the, uh, quarry, uh, work that Mr. Wilson was proposing. But they did apply additional conditions from the town, including, for example, notifying the CEO ten days before a blast. That is their rule, and they can take note that their rule was not complied with, and when deciding whether somebody has seven months after saying they only need two blasts, comes back in saying they need to do five, uh, have they shown that they will be, um, respectful citizens when they're running their operation and will comply with the not terribly onerous conditions imposed by the planning board? The planning board can certainly look at that in deciding whether they may, might at least need to pause. And maybe they could also take into account the fact that the select board, when they heard about the various irregularities, were sufficiently concerned that they are going to put to the town in June a question whether there should be a six-month moratorium on quarries so that they can, the town can look more closely into whether they need to tighten their own rules.
Great. That'll be a question, the Order Review Committee.
Just, uh, just a point of order real quick, I, can we, because we haven't addressed conflicts of interest or bias yet, before the planning board starts talking, I think maybe let's do all the public comment, and then we'll turn to the board. Either that, or we gotta do the conflicts and bias thing.
Yeah, let's have a comment if I may, I'm Mark Jones, I live at thirty-six No deal, which I think is about a half a mile from where this operation. I would concur with everything that Ms. Wallace has said, um, the, the, my main concern is the noise. And the noise of the grinding of the material, and it goes on some days, six days a week on Saturday. And let me just tell you, that's a noise that's a very big nuisance for us living on the other side of that code. So I would be very much against expansion of any permit that must be in the question.
Any other comments?
Haven't heard from you yet.
I, I wanna add to that, uh, I was thinking about speaking of, about the noise myself, in terms of the increase of the, well, number of blasts, that's much more of the rock or stone that he's going to have to work with, and the noise from the crushing and working with the rocks, just moving them around, all of it, is very loud, I live quite close, what, fifteen hundred feet away from the quarry. And it goes on all day long sometimes. And it's very invasive. You're increasing the size of this business, it's going to increase that even more. If it's twelve thousand yards a blast, that's sixty thousand yards a year, it has to seem like that's a much larger volume. And I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. I spent a lot of time looking through the comprehensive plan and looking at things about when that was put together, that there was in several places, reference to encouraging small industry, light industry, I'm sorry, light industry. The expansion that's being presented by Travis Wilson says heavy industry to me. And I'm not sure that that's what's intended in the area where we are, that you can, you will say that quarries are all right to be operating, but this, this, this doesn't feel at all right.
Could I, yeah, could I jump in again?
Yes.
Would it be within the purview of the planning board to table until after the discussion from the select board regarding the mineral extraction moratorium, to find out how that pans out before you move forward?
We could, but, uh, I think Travis has been waiting two months already.
He has. You don't, you don't, you, I was gonna say, you don't, you wouldn't think it's prudent for the, for the residents and taxpayers to wait for that to be determined?
I'll take that one, so I'm Kristen Collins, I'm the town attorney.
Yeah.
And we've got to process an application as it comes to us, we don't, you know, delay because there's something else going on legislatively. But as to the question of should the board table, I mean, I think the board's gonna need to table just based on lack of information right now. But as to the question of should the board table, I mean, I think the board's gonna need to table just based on lack of information right now. Um, from my perspective, we don't have enough data about the blasting that occurred already in front of the board. And we don't have enough data about how much would be, you know, what the impacts of this would be. So I think if the planning board wanted to get into this discussion, it seems like more information about the potential impact of all these blasts would be necessary in order to really apply the ordinance to it. So, just two cents there.
Follow-up question about the pending legislation to you. Um, is there, to me, it feels like there is risk to the planning board, given, given the proposed retroactive date of April twenty-second and given the date on this application of May thirteenth, um, there is risk that the planning board could be taking an action that is like retroactively declared illegal. Um, what is that?
Now, right now, yeah, important to remember that right now there is no moratorium.
Yeah.
So what's the date of town meeting again? So June seventeen. Okay, so if as of June seventeenth, the mor- moratorium passes, at that point, if the permit is still in process, we have to stop processing that permit. So that means there would not be a next meeting at that point. We would just find that the moratorium is applicable and we're gonna table it indefinitely. Or deny it. And if the application had been granted before June seventeenth, then that's going to retroactively nullify that permit, which it can do under state law up until that permit has been approved for forty-five days. Um, so I think just given the timing of things, if that moratorium passes, it's either gonna stop the process or it's going to nullify the approval. That said, that can all happen and still be compatible with going through this process. Right? We go through the process in the normal course as if there weren't no looming moratorium. And if the moratorium passes, it's gonna do one of those two things.
Kristen, I have a quick question for you.
Yeah.
Travis, what is, on a, we got an email, we got a letter from March the seventh. We didn't have a planning board meeting in March. It was no fault of Travis's that we didn't have it. Okay, so that was postponed. So Travis is, Travis was ready. And we should have heard his application or his request at that time. So now, these other things have developed. And we're kind of, uh, we have a little bit of a, I think we gotta keep a little bit of an honor system here as far as when we knew about this and we didn't act on it. And it was not Travis's fault.
So the moratorium doesn't matter, under the moratorium, if it passes, it doesn't matter when he filed an application. It matters when it was approved. So if it wasn't approved by April twenty-second, then it's subject to the moratorium. And so any of the stuff that may have happened that may have delayed that approval is not relevant. It's really just about that that approval date. The other thing is, and let's say it were the application date. I think the application date is May thirteenth. Because that letter was not an application in the normal, you know, process.
Application for amendments.
You have an application for land use approvals though, at which this still is, even though it's an amendment.
We have a performance standard for this already back in October. We've amended them in the past for other people. I think I found three or four here. The way they've come in and we've we've done them a, we've amended their performance standards since I've been chairman here, last six years. So what I'm, what what that, that's where I have a little issue. Should we, I think we should follow through and have an up or down vote. And if the moratorium overrides it, then so be it. But in the meantime, I think we owe it to the man that put it in and we did not act. And it wasn't his fault. We couldn't hold a meeting that month of March. Because if we had held one, we would have voted on it then.
I don't think so. You wouldn't have had enough information just based on that letter. I mean, I don't think you have enough information right now.
Well, he's not increasing his area. He's he's not, he just wants to do more smaller blasts instead of huge blasts. Which are gonna be done, they're gonna be done. It's gonna be, it's gonna, I I feel it's gonna be worse to have two big blasts than five smaller blasts. Either way, he's gonna be blasting up there.
I I mean, you might think that, but I think we need professional opinion on that. Because cumulative effects of blasting can be well worse than that you have, you you rattle the stuff and then you rattle it again and then you rattle it again. I've seen these presentations in other contexts, in mineral extraction applications, where that finding was made. So I think you need science, unfortunately. What was that?
Do you have any data or any information on that? Where's it coming from?
Yeah, I'm coming from, I mean, I've been reviewing mineral extraction applications and representing mineral extraction applicants for twenty-some years and I've seen those reports from engineers. So I mean, I think, I think that's what you'd need to see in order to get the information about whether it's gonna cause more impact or less.
All right.
I would also say that an expansion in time of blasting is, to me, still an expansion in my given that, given that noise.
To the extent each one of those events is a nuisance, that's five times nuisance rather than two.
So I think.
Okay. Is there any state regulations to restrict this? Is there any state regulations to restrict this? No, so, well, if he stays within his permit that he has now from the state, is he operating it within it? That's the question. I I I'm more of a fax guy, cut and dry type thing. I wanna know what he's allowed to do, what he's not allowed to do.
Something I wanna do, Herb, real quick, is just identify the ordinance that we're applying here, the standards that we're applying. So, so my take on the ordinance, which has always been a little bit disorganized, is if it's a planning board review, you're applying the conditional use standards. Is that what the board did the first time around?
It's conditional use, yes.
Okay. So then you're applying those standards to this. So that means the board is gonna have to make positive findings when we get there. You know, about there's, whether there's safe operation consistent with the pro- proposed proposed use. Um, the size and character of the proposed use is reasonably comparable to the size of surrounding uses. You know, all those things that you approved and reviewed the last time around, you're gonna have to do here as to, limited, but limited as to the effects of the additional blasts. So you're gonna have to go through all of that. And the question is, do you have enough information to do that?
We were only given the the information recently, so it goes to what Bill said, is that we need more data and we need time to understand the data and Mr. Wilson said he doesn't understand the data.
I do think it's important at least that that data on the board.
Sorry.
We have it.
You have it?
Yeah. We have, we have blast reports.
Do you know how to read them?
We don't. We have, this is the first blast report I've received.
Okay.
Um, I do have a couple of questions about the blast report, but.
Yeah, real quick before I forget, Travis, is in terms of the charge that you're gonna need for each of these blasts, is that going down from the charge you're using?
Yes, it's going, because what we answer questions, the reason we need more blasts is because our rock is different than we expected it to be. So, our first blast was like a medium spread, it was like eight feet apart, um, and like a medium charge. Our second blast was further, oh no, the first one was tighter, smaller charge, second one was further apart, larger charge. Um, so first blast being last November, second blast being February. Um, this most recent blast, we spread into like eleven or twelve feet and down the charge significantly. So it's like a one-to-one ratio is what they said. I don't know exactly what it is, but it's about half of the impact that the initial charge was. If we can maintain smaller blasts, we can keep that charge set. If we have to do larger blasts, we need to tighten it up and increase our charge.
So you'd be using the same blast charge that you used in February?
Nope, we'd be using the same blast charge we just used in April.
Oh, in April. So you had one in November, you said, and one in February?
Yep.
And then there's another in April?
Yep, just a small, because we, so the one we did in February, um, produced a lot of small material, which is great for crushing, but we had no larger rock that we were expecting for seawall stabilization, which we do a lot of. Um, so the one in April was basically a test to see if this type of blast will work to get us larger rock. And it kind of did exactly what we wanted to do, but you can't do that in a much larger, and have, do break it up into smaller segments.
So you have three blasts in the year?
No.
You had a calendar year, but not in the, in the, in the
permit.
Twelve-month period, not a calendar year.
Does it, was it specific about that?
I do not believe so. Let me check.
I would think it's a rolling year. Yeah, where it's not specific about, like it's running from the permit date, I would treat it as within a year, a rolling year.
So October second to October second?
Well, even if it was October second to October second, that was three blasts.
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's, that's the different year we're talking about. I think that.
And if it was just a rolling calendar year, then it's the same, it also.
The first year, it was allowed one initial blast and then two blasts. And then from the years after that, it was just three blasts.
Got it. Okay, so technically he was allowed three blasts.
Then two.
Okay. So not violation?
No.
Got it.
No.
The one in February was a much stronger blast than the one in um, in in April.
Okay, which makes sense.
I'm trying to remember, it was somewhere around sixteen thousand pounds of explosives produced to crush, to crush roughly ten thousand, between ten thousand to eleven thousand yards of rock. That was in February. The one in April was much, was much smaller.
But we still felt the.
But we still felt the.
Even though we're not within the violation area.
Can I have people make sure they tell their name? I'm trying to write down things and you're just blurting out, so please say your name, please.
They need to be recognized. Say their name.
Yeah, just like to state once again, like that's our whole, our goal isn't to blast, crush, screen, process any moment here. It's just to do it in a more efficient manner that's a little bit easier on the surrounding area.
Was there a number of truck trips limited or anything the last time? Okay. Does the board agree with the public when they say that the characterization that was that it was for use for their own business and no retail sale?
Well, I remember.
Uh, no, that was not the case. That was not the case.
Okay, so I need to remember that as well.
It would be in the performance standards. It would be in the performance standards. It's not the case.
It wouldn't be in the performance standards.
How to run a business. We don't tell them how to run the, the business that.
No, but it, or it goes, it goes to the impacts of the business. It's different if they're using it for their own use versus retail sale to the public. Because they can control the number of trips in and out and they're not making as many trips because it's your stock, where do you stockpile onsite or elsewhere?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Right, so if they're stockpiling, if they're blasting, stockpiling onsite and only taking it out when they need it, then that's different than the public can come in and get any amount at any time.
We don't let the public just come in.
They're advertising to the public.
You're advertising.
We deliver.
Okay, you deliver.
Yeah.
Same thing though, right? You're gonna deliver how much ever somebody wants to buy.
But my comment that several people have taken out of context and didn't read the rest of it was our goal is to, the main focus of this quarry is to supply our needs. And then down the line, in future, we would like to sell some to offset that cost.
That's a contract, which you said originally.
Nobody is reading the second part or listening to the second part of wherever they found that. They're taking what they want out of context.
Okay, well, down the line implies that for the purposes of that permit, that's what you were representing was the scope, you were just gonna use it yourself. And so if that's changing, I think the board needs to.
I didn't say like, it was discussed it right then, no.
Herb, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I, when I, that was about the time I came to the first planning board meeting. I asked Travis, was he going to be selling crushed rock? And he said, give the office a call. So my interpretation of that is that he was going to do retail and that was a question at the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I'm I'm sorry, uh, I didn't quite understand what Moira said. You, what, Moira, could you clarify what you understood him to be saying?
Sondra, what I asked at the planning board meeting was, was he going to self-crush gravel? Um, and for driveways, to be more specific. And he said, give his office a call. So I interpret that as yes, retail.
I did a word-for-word transcription of the October 17th meeting, Linda Garrett, and um, he just said that he was going to be using the rock for his own use. And I had it, I did a word-for-word transcription of and, well, I think Linda, that conversation I had was at one point, I don't know if it was loud enough or not, but I did ask that question. I actually asked him twice in a couple meetings. I mean, I was very, very careful, Moira, and I.
I'm sure you, I'm sure you were, but I, and I don't know if that was on or not, but I know I asked the question.
Maybe one-on-one.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Who's running the meeting?
Linda's talking and I didn't know. Linda Garrett, so um, I did reread the performance standards review permit and I do have a note, the statement in it that really resonates with me about protecting the public interest and fitting such uses harmoniously and compatibly into their neighborhood and locations. And I feel that with the current situation that we're in, the public interest is not being protected and I am not feeling the kumbaya or the harmony or the compatibility. Um, I also want to point out that, um, if I can read my notes correctly, a comment that was made by Mr. Wilson in October two about the DEP, and the DEP is a really important regulatory body. And he said, and this began from my uh word-for-word transcription, they come out and inspect and look for issues on an annual basis or multiple times yearly. So I followed the DEP and I spoke with the mine mining coordinator and he said, we would be lucky if they would come out in three years. So I just wanted to point out that, you know, right now, I don't think there's very much little, any DEP oversight. Um, I'd also like to to ask the planning board if it is permitted to vote on matters that are relating to heavy industrial activity, because I I did a little bit of research and I think that the the line of for D and not construction, but the line between light industrial activity and heavy industrial activity has been crossed.
That's not, uh, we don't distinguish between that in our ordinance.
Is it something, not something though, that considering that there are many.
Not in there, just just industrial, just plain industrial.
It, would it not be something that we would be concerned about though, the crossing the line between light, light.
Yes, but, you know, what I'm saying, the fact is, it's not in there. See, it's just, the word isn't just industrial. Industrial use. I I know what you, I get your point, you know, what's a lot or little, but we don't have that.
Can I get back to you, um, Mr. Curtis, to about the bit about protecting the public interest and fitting such uses harmoniously and compatibility into their neighborhoods and locations? That's in the big standard uh review permit.
Well, the thing is, that's an allowed area. It's an allowed use area. It's an R1. Matter of fact, uh, all that land over there by on Waterman's Beach Road, that was all R1 for a long time. It just recently, in the last, maybe, I don't know, last maybe five to ten years got changed to R2. So you actually, you they've they've designated the I1 area as an area for industrial use in this town. So it's voted on by the, the ordinance voted on by the people of the town. What it, what districts are where. That was all voted at town meeting. So that's all we go by. We just go by what is allowed in that zone or that district.
We do, I mean.
Conditional use standards.
We do apply the conditional use standards and we do, you know, there's a section in there for managing nuisances, there's a section in there for managing noise and dust. Um, I think, or, um, what I'm hearing from the townspeople is that they're asking us to be very careful as we apply those conditional use standards to this proposed. As we apply those conditional use standards to this proposed expansion. Of Travis's permit, and they're telling us, you know, that they're, they don't feel that. Um, the way that that was applied previously in the board adequately protected them. And I think that's, you know, something, that's something that I feel like we should take pretty seriously. Um, and I think that.
We have a process, where we have it, they, they put an application in. We had a public hearing, we have opportunities for the public to speak. And we have the, uh, we have to follow the ordinance ourselves. And that's what we did. We follow the ordinance that, that's presented to us from the town. If the, would like to write a new ordinance or, or, or spot zone or do different things, then. You know, that's, that has nothing to do with what we're doing with tonight. He's just got an app, he just wants an amendment to, to do. Five blasts a year, two blasts. That's what we gotta deal with.
We do, yeah.
You have to go through each one of those standards. It's not, it's not a, he just won. You still gotta go through every single one, and if you don't. Feel you have enough information, then that's what you need to ask.
Well, we, we can certainly do that too. I mean. Uh, you know, you, a lot, how much, we can't get any more information if he's not allowed to blast anymore.
He is allowed to blast. If you, right now, there is no more touring. You can go through this process. If he wants you to keep going through this process, you go through the process. And you determine whether, based on the conditional use standards, you can allow the additional blasts.
Correct.
I have a, I have a follow-up question about more information for you and your experience, um. You mentioned, you know, expert testimony essentially, um, and review some kind of scientific review. How do you, how does somebody get that?
So what I would be asking for is a blasting plan, um, prepared by, you know, an appropriately. Trained professional. And. There are lots of people who look at this stuff, but usually it's geologists would be doing that. And there are loads of people who specifically serve the industry. Um, even the, the blasting company Travis used, do they have somebody?
I'm sure they do. Yeah, they, it's kind of their deal there. The ones that everybody calls. That's why we went with that company is. They kind of. Know it all and do it all.
They have a very good reputation, being drawn blasting.
And if they're, if they're unable to, I mean, I think what the planning board would be looking for, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but. You'd be looking for. Information on the, the, I think the charges that would be used. The amount, I know how much he's saying he would, but the amount of material that would be expected to be yielded, um. Information like, how far apart would the charges be spaced, that kind of thing. But then the, the. Gushier part is, what's the expected impact to surrounding structures? From five blasts here versus the three blasts that he's already done.
That's unenforceable by the planning board.
It's not, you gotta go through the standards, and in order to determine whether this is gonna have more impact. You gotta figure out, you gotta know the science behind it.
And I think, um. I have a question, so I have a follow-up question about the blast reports. When it says pay cubic volume, is that the amount of material that was, was realized by the blast? Pay volume?
Yes.
Yep. So that February blast, which was the large one, yielded eight thousand two hundred eighty-four point two hundred yards of material.
And we're talking.
And we've been five for blast for twelve weeks, which is one and a half times the size.
Yeah.
My one and a half times yield, not necessarily one and a half times the size. Um, so I think that, for example, is relevant information that I just sort of accidentally figured out by looking at this report. Um, which leads me to believe that we are not prepared to vote on this tonight. That's my opinion.
To put a finer point on that, you're seeing that the, the public's complaining about the impacts, including one. Pretty obvious direct connection to damage.
Yes.
From the February blast, which yielded four thousand fewer cubic yards of material than what.
Than is what is being requested. That is correct.
Times five.
Correct.
Okay, it makes a lot of sense.
I have a question. I've glanced the blasting report and I did not see anything regarding. The impact of the quality of the quantity of groundwater. So I've not seen any kind of information on the groundwater impact. So it's, and I was under the impression the blasting company would be providing that.
Travis, what are your monitoring requirements for groundwater?
Oh, they tested water before and they just tested water like a month ago. I haven't seen the report, so I'll.
Yeah, that would be good for us to see, as well as just the locations where they're testing water. So Chris, can I ask you another quick question procedurally? Um, apologies, we don't. Deal with this for the first time, uh, at least I am, um, and. So for requesting this kind of information, is that something that we would officially? Like, we need to come with a list of all the information that we want at this meeting?
I think that if you're ready to do that.
I don't feel particularly ready to do that, but I think, um, what I. I would like to, I just want to hear from you a little bit more about. What you would expect the process of discovering this information to be. And, um, this, again, based on your experience, unnecessarily in your capacity as a town attorney, but as, as, as the, the closest to an expert we have.
So the, um. I would think at the end of this meeting, you would vote to table the application. And request additional information from the applicant to it, you know. Whatever you want to do about blasting information, um, groundwater impacts. And I think we'd all reserve the right to request more information once you've kind of looked at that first. Round, tranche of stuff that you, you'd have thirty days to provide, however long it is till the next meeting. And if he's ready to go with that, we'd have another meeting. And I, I don't mean that this would stretch out indefinitely, but. At this point, I think you just need to go down the conditional standards. And see if anything else is triggered, like, we need more information on this point. And try to, try to put as much out there that you need today as, as you can.
I have one more follow-up question about the length of the process. So I believe our town ordinance says that the planning board shall not, like, consider, but shall approve or deny in writing. Applications within thirty-five days, something like that?
Yeah, this.
Of the, of the.
Within thirty-five days of the date of receiving a written application. The CEO notifies the applicant in writing that the application is a complete application. Or if it is incomplete, what specific additional material is needed to make a complete application. All permits shall be either approved or denied in writing within thirty-five days of receiving a completed application, including all information requested.
And so that's, so we're in the requesting information phase, got it.
So again, we don't want to keep playing, you know, catch up.
Gonna be efficient.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So I guarantee it'll be served by that.
You can.
Yes.
I have a question. Is there gonna be a tutorial on how to read the blast report?
I'm, that'd be some of the information that we would want personally.
But to have a sheet that says what it means.
Yeah, no, I.
What would be really helpful actually is to have, uh, the blasting people come and actually walk you guys through it and their, their opinion. What I don't see in your ordinance is a clear provision that you can hire somebody to help you out, like, help read this stuff and tell you what you need. That said, if you're feeling like, we just don't have enough information or expertise to figure this out. I still think if it's between denial, because you don't have enough information or you don't feel confident, um, and. Hiring somebody to help you, that's a question for the applicant as to whether he'd help pay for that.
And I don't want to be a question of what minimal budget the planning board has.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, the, the ideal thing is if an applicant brings somebody to the table who is qualified, experienced, unbiased. And gives you all the information in a way that you can digest it. Um, and I, I think that's your first try here. But then if you still feel like that's lacking or you need help, um, you think about that.
Yes. Um. I'm just quickly trying to generate a list of information, um. And Moira, feel free to chime in if you have any other, the other information I know, um.
The, the only thing I'm thinking about still is, it's gonna be two. Larger blasts versus five smaller blasts. And how can that be good?
But I think, I, I think the point that was just made was that the blast. That actually occurred in February was actually smaller than the blasts that are being asked for.
Correct, but I mean, if you. Don't have the additional blast, smaller blast, the next time they blast, it's gonna be big. It's gonna have to be.
But it's also the cumulative impact of, of the series of blasts, so we have to pay attention to, and that's, we need an expert.
Yeah. That's, that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Is the cumulative impact something that can be divined in some way from the tub surface geology of the area? Like, how much is this vibration being transferred? Like, how contiguous is this?
Yeah, so geologists will be able to tell you what the expected, you know, radius of, of vibration would be. From those and, and whether there would be more expected cumulative impact.
Right. Um, is there a way, and I think we have some information already about some impacts that have already happened, but I think one thing that we would want to know is. You know, if there are more impacts that have already happened, we'd like to know. I mean, not beyond the noise, but yeah, of course.
No, I, the, the blast in April knocked, I'm sorry, Katie Oldakowski, sixty thirteen. Um, the blast in April knocked two weight scotty panels an inch off my wall. Like, hanging off the wall, popping the nails right on the wall. And I believe that was the smaller of the two blasts.
Right, yeah, but it's, yeah.
So there is other, can I hammer back into the wall? Yes, but what else is happening?
No, no, I understand. I think.
To my house.
And I, I know, I'm just. I'm glad to hear, but I'm not glad to hear it, but I'm glad that you are here to say it, is what I mean.
So, and I took pictures, cause I'm like, huh, like. Considering it, the February one was a lot bigger, but again, is the cumulative effect that you're asking about. From the big blast in February to the blast, smaller blast in April, wiggling everything loose in my house. I mean, it's knocked a picture off my wall, the one in February did. Didn't break, not a big deal, but there, there is a cumulative effect, so. If he's asking for bigger blasts than the big one in February, I think getting more information for you guys to make a educated decision is. A good idea. Just my opinion.
Did you have your house inspected?
Yep, and so.
Insurance. Cause that would be information that we should have all the houses that were inspected. And look at, possessive control of where they are and have them re-inspected to see where they are now. So that we can see what's happening. The list.
Yep. I agree, um.
And do we have? Company that did it, list.
Yeah, we'll need that list.
Oh, more, that's the same.
Oh, visuals the same, okay. Can you send those, just send those out to Terry?
Yeah, he's gonna send it to me tomorrow.
Perfect. Um, well, that's good news.
I mean, the water's not great, but my office book is the same.
Still bad. Yes, please.
A couple of things, I, the last time we had a meeting with Travis here, and I don't know how it goes, but. Originally, when the town was host of Cindy and Butters, a certified letter, I brought this out at the meeting. I never received a certified letter. Debbie Childers, nineteen coves and road. And you should have that in the office, the people that signed the letter. I didn't receive one.
You're not in a butter.
What?
You're not in a butter. A butter shares a property one.
I think we have, um, in our planning board bylaws. A relatively tight radius for notification letters, Terry, is this correct? Five hundred feet.
Yes.
From the property line.
And I sent out twenty-seven letters above this meeting tonight.
At the meeting tonight, so what about the other one?
I didn't send any out, the blasting company did.
Yes, that was, that was.
And that was a Butters only.
Required for D E P to a Butters.
Okay, so I think it's a definition issue, but it's still unfortunate, yes, please.
So the road, uh, voids the, so I'm not in a butter.
We don't share a property one.
Can I just point out that, uh, I'm, I'm Linda Garrett, that for the board meeting, pre, pre, um, in advance of the board meeting on October two. I know that only seven homeowners, excuse me, including two difficult, difficult addresses were notified. By registered or certified mail about Mr. Wilson's intent to operate a quarry. But however, for tonight's meeting, there were twenty-seven recipients who registered letters. So it even strikes me that I, I would like to know who generated the letter in the fall, which was only sent to seven people. Why there is such a disparity? And it, it strikes me that this is a flaw in the original permit approval process.
We just answered that. The first letter we needed to go to a Butters and a Butters only. That was a D A requirement.
By this time, twenty-seven people.
And that was certified by the town.
I wanted to make sure I didn't have any more grief about people not getting letters. So I took the ruler, I did five hundred feet from all, from his line everywhere and sent out twenty-seven letters.
I commend you, I think that's much better.
I think. Did we, so we didn't, we didn't send notifications to Butters for the original October second.
No, we did not.
Planning board application. Did we schedule a public hearing for that? We did. We did not. We did, it wasn't a public hearing, yes.
Yeah, publicly.
Okay. Um, they were notified, but not by the town of South Hamilton. They're notified by the blasting company, like Travis.
They were notified by us.
Not by us.
Yep.
That, that's allowed. That, that is also.
Certified mail.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure you, that makes sense, um.
And that is allowed.
For the D E Ps, uh.
I'm just gonna review the bylaws on that, um, not pretty.
Go ahead. Katie Oldakowski again. So in August, who was that inspected? Was it August? Whenever the insurance company came around and inspected. I didn't get a letter because of when I bought my house, but all my neighbors did, including people farther away. So why were we all inspected? But not notified? And this may be a D E P thing versus a town thing, but why were so many of us?
The town did not notify you about the insurance company. The town had nothing to do with that. That would have been something that would have happened.
Where's the blasting company?
So the blasting company sent out those letters to have us inspected?
Yes. Okay, just clarification.
Okay.
One question, I think, oh, well. We sent out letters for the, the public hearings as well. To the But, uh, look, people within five hundred feet, that's correct, right? I'm looking at my letters here now.
Our bylaws suggest that we're supposed to do that.
I have them here now. I'm looking at them. A bunch of them I have, we sent out. Uh, this was not done. Before I became chairman, we did not notify Butters at all for any of this stuff. So this is an improvement. So if everybody thinks it's not, it is. If I'm a fool. Let me see here, I'm looking at this. August second, twenty twenty-two, this was for. Look at the right lot here. I'll make sure. Nine eleven.
The town did send out ten. Certified letters to Lewis, B and Butters for the public hearing.
It was sent out, we, we also sent out some letters, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. On this particular lot, lot, mat nine, lot eleven.
That was, yeah, some of your previous, previous applications, yeah.
One for the.
Does anybody on the planning board who's at this meeting have? More ideas for information that they would need to feel comfortable voting for this application? Because I think what we're doing right now. My mind is generating a list of the information that we need, so that we can try and get it in front of us as efficiently as we can. Anything, Val?
Um, I have to read it again, but I, I definitely want to see the water reports. I would like to get someone to tell us, you know. Interpret the, the blasting reports, so that we have, we can make an honest decision, an honest recommendation decision. And as well as an informed one. And I think we should, you know, basically encourage the re-inspection of the houses. And I think we should, you know, basically encourage the reinspection of the houses at this time, since we've had three blasts. And for anyone else who has not had it, had it, so I think we have to basically figure out how to, you know, better serve the public with giving them the option for the inspection of their homes.
Would you want those inspections before you could improve this, or would you approve this? Or is that sort of like you did last time and are expecting there to be inspections?
Well, I, I think the, the, the inspections, from my perspective, probably should be rolling, because we've had three blasts. And we should probably compare that data to the original data, so if we're gonna collect data, we should then also collect data on the home inspections.
I got a question here.
Go ahead.
My question is, I'll go back to this, March seventh, when he requested the planning board for these three blasts. Now, if you have this, right now, they got, you're, Kristen's saying, well, the moratorium, or he didn't have his application in time, but we, yeah, we need to take a look at that. Because he did contact the planning board.
But the select board also said it was not an application, it was an amendment, and it wasn't formal.
Well, we've done other things, Val, that we, we, we've taken people and modified applications at the planning board meetings. You know, we've done a lot of things for a lot of people, so I wanna be clear with everybody.
The application, application dates are relevant to the moratorium, it's the approval date.
Well, if the approval date is now, that's, if the moratorium passes, then it's moot point anyway. So we go through a lot of.
It would have been, it would have passed pretty much.
Why do you think that?
I don't think you would have been here.
That's my point.
I mean, you would have still had all the members of the public here asking for all this. They're still here.
Yeah, yeah, um, so I think.
I, I mean, I think, I think it would have been, if that, if it had passed, it would have been, it would have lost on appeal.
I do think it would have passed if it had been on the seventh, or the thirteenth, I think it would have passed.
But again, it's irrelevant, because there was no meeting, right, yeah.
So.
It wasn't Travis's fault.
No, I get it, I get it, and if the, the select board finds that argument persuasive, they can amend that moratorium and make it application date, not approval date.
Um. So I think in the interest of.
The other thing they can add, because I'd like to get this list done, is the seismic recordings, what's at his office?
What if the cavity thing, they set it up when they blast.
Okay, but I think.
Yeah, some, some, I don't know what.
We have some, but it, and we need to low some of the readings, but we're getting different observations, so we should have the facts of what happened with each of the blasts at the site and understand what those mean, and so that when people go and look at it, they can understand it.
Yeah, understood, because I do not understand this, it is true.
So Kristen, if after town meeting, the ordinance does not pass, and we've gotten down the road, clearly we won't, because the next meeting we would have to be in June before, it'll be after the town meeting.
Third Thursday.
Yeah, which will be the nineteenth of June, which will be after town meeting.
Yep.
So if the ordinance does not pass, then we would just proceed with the information.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna hear this application on the nineteenth regardless, because you're gonna table it to the nineteenth. And at that meeting, you're either gonna take a vote that says the moratorium passed, we're gonna halt processing, or you're gonna say, great, you got this information, let's take a look and see whether we have enough to go through the standards.
I'm just trying to get a clear picture for everybody, and the nineteenth's a holiday, so I don't know if that's gonna happen to anybody.
Christian, I have, Christian, I have a, I guess, a legal question. See if I can remember it now that I was gonna ask it, um. Nope, I forgot it, I'm sorry, come back.
I'll be here.
No, that's fine.
So do you wanna try to make a motion with the list you have running?
Uh, the only other thing, I was just gonna read off my list of information that would be helpful is possibly, um, some information about traffic and some information about truck trips.
And this is as related to the revelation that it's for public, like it's retail now?
And just related to the volume of material that's been extracted so far. So you know how many truck trips have been generated by a certain volume of material, I might be able to predict.
That's a good point.
Um, how many?
Also, at one time, they were supposed to sign, put up truck traffic, and I don't believe that's been done.
They haven't, they have, yeah.
Okay, that was, it wasn't done before I left town.
I think I saw, yeah.
Okay.
Signs are up, yes.
Um.
So you want the number of truck trips since the approval?
I mean, if there's any way you have in your records, Travis, of deliveries, like.
Deliveries or all truck trips? There's also a lot of material that we haul in there from other pits.
Yeah, no, I think it's.
Brush and.
And make it possible to make a reasonable effort to estimate the number of truck trips that were quarried material from your site. I mean.
And the point being, Gabe, and the point being, why do we need to know how many truck trips and?
Because traffic is, traffic is an impact that we have in our performance standards. Um, and we need to understand a little bit about what that impact would be if this operation were to go on at the capacity, at the full capacity of what's being requested in turn.
Gabe, I just have some basic information, just some information that is available right now.
Yes.
Um, let's, we can assume, okay, um, that we're gonna have five blasts which would yield approximately sixty thousand cubic yards, each one, each blast being twelve thousand cubic yards, so five would be sixty thousand.
Yep.
And if we take, uh, the number of working days, and I figured out there's a hundred and four weekend days, okay, that the operation is not working, and eleven legal holidays. So the balance is two hundred and fifty days. So if we assume, and, uh, Mr. Travis Wilson could correct me if I'm wrong, um, that the, uh, the trucks, uh, yield, uh, the, the truck bed capacity is approximately eighteen cubic yards. So, um, if we take, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, the volume of the, of the, the trucks that deliver this, uh, the, the, the material, um, it's gonna require one thousand three hundred and thirty-three round trips to deliver. Uh, wait a second, I'm sorry, it's gonna require three thousand three hundred and thirty-three round trips to deliver sixty thousand cubic yards. So if we divide it, we divide that by eighteen, that's, that's, that's basically how we get to three thousand three hundred and thirty-three. And if we take the three thousand three hundred and thirty-three and divide it by two hundred and fifty days a year, that means thirteen point three three round trips.
Okay.
Per day.
All right, I think that's unofficial, but.
A lot of killing mid diesel emissions too, from an environmental standpoint, like, you know, the cars are not, the trucks are not running on air, they're running on fuel.
Hmm. Um, so that's just another one that I would put, put in the list, so right now, I'm gonna read my list that I have of the information that we have discussed requesting related to this application, that is, the blasting plan, which is a document that predicts the size, basically, I assume, Kristen, that says, here is what we're going to do, here is the size of the charge we're gonna use, here's the amount of material we expect.
Yeah.
Here, and then here is some layer of analysis on top of that about what the significance of the vibration will be, what the volume of noise will be, and so on. And what the cumulative impact of these five blasts over a year might be on structures in a certain radius based on what we know about the geology of the area.
And I would, I would say, as compared to the impact of the past three blasts.
Yeah, as compared to the impact of the past three blasts. Okay.
It's a low fluid, because chargers and drill spacing changes with depth. As it gets deeper, which we're doing, it spreads, and the charge gets less.
But they should be able to predict that.
That's something they can explain.
They'll, they'll predict, they would.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, they'll make it, they'll make it educated. They know more than many of us in the room about what that might be.
Yes, well, and we also, like, as you already realized, is we went into it, the second blast was way too aggressive for the rockets there. It's similar to what they do in other quarries, but it was too aggressive for the rockets there, so they had to numb it down. Similarly, we might get into a situation where it has to get numb down more.
Understood. Um.
So it's not gonna be black and white.
Yeah, understood, understood.
Just making that clear.
No, it won't, it won't, um, we understand it's gonna be a project, a projection, a projection into the future, um. So then we would request that.
Gabe, when you talk about, sorry, Gabe, when you talk about impacts, I haven't heard any mention of the impact on the roads, the road surface of all those heavy trucks?
I, um, that's, thank you, Sandra, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't read my, my questions about traffic yet, but I'll add that.
Oh, I'm not, that, but not, yeah, I mean, there's the congestion and traffic and danger and all that, but there's also they're probably gonna be grinding up the roads, that's all I'm saying, wherever it fits.
Thank you, let's, let's, uh, go down, go down the list, and then without anybody interrupting.
My, my second item on my list was that we would request that Major Liam Blasting attends the next planning board meeting, um, in order to answer questions from the board about the blasting reports and how to interpret them. Um. The third items on my, on my list was some accounting of the impacts that have already been documented based on the blasts that have happened. And these are, you know, we mean by that, like damage to structures, um, like sort of hard factual things that we can do, and I understand, we also want the qualitative information, but, um, yeah, but then we would want, we would want documentation of, of real impacts that have been, that have happened.
And be, and put down that you want the original inventory inspections by the company, and then what happened late afterwards, so you have the, the control bases and what.
Yeah. Yeah, we would like to. Yeah, exactly.
And that needs to be there.
Yeah, so including all of the inspection reports that were generated as part of the um, original inspections for insurance purposes. Um, and I think if it's possible to have some reinspections of specific properties where impacts are suspected, at least during that time, um, it would be very helpful to see those reports as well. Um. And then the only other thing I have on my list is the information about truck trips, such as it is possible to divine without imposing an undue burden, um, so that the planning board can weigh, um, the traffic impact of the proposed expansion.
We didn't add the diesel or the road conditions that we mentioned by the public.
Um, those are both impacts of increased traffic, in my view. But yeah, we.
Yeah, that's, I need to be, I think you need to determine first whether there is going to be an impact
Yeah, that's fine. I would just, I think, I think the number of trips is the, is the information from which those questions will be, will flow. Um, in my opinion. And that was my list.
What about, I don't think you said water testing results?
Oh, yes, our water testing results and, uh, as well as the locations of the wells. Um. Water.
And impact on groundwater.
Yes.
Okay, please don't interrupt. We threw this.
We just said, we just said that, Sandra, we've got it. Um. Water info and well locations.
I mean, testing the well locations that they tested, did they test offsite?
They tested onsite only, right?
No, they test everywhere they did a pre-inspection, they, they have their water tests. They tested water everywhere there, they didn't, haven't gone back to do that. Um, they've rechecked my, my well, which is the closest one to the quarry.
I see, so they rechecked your well, but not the other ones that they checked pre-blasting?
Yep, they can.
Yeah, does the, does the board want to request inspection of any ones that were done pre-blast, and those reports?
I, I think we ought, we ought to.
I don't, I don't see what's the point? They've already blasted.
To see whether the.
Before they blasted, and now they've already blasted.
Well, we want to basically see if the benchmark has changed.
It, it's, it's not, the benchmark is to see whether.
Before, these walls weren't checked before, right?
They were, that's what he's saying, they were, as part of the inspections.
I'm sorry, could I interrupt just briefly? Um, as in the butter, um, when our person came out to do the inspection of the building, uh, our inspector said she found it pretty strange that having the well checked was not part of the inspection process. At Harmony Bible Church, we did have our well inspected, we had it done by, uh, on our own, and we paid for it on our own, because it was not part of the inspection, at least according to the person who came and inspected the building.
We should find that out. And if it was done.
They didn't.
All the pre-blast reports, and then we would like post-blast reports as well, just to measure any potential impact. Um.
Hmm.
And I think less, you know, that's the hard information. I think we also, if members of public have photographs, documentation of impacts, um, is there a best practice for collecting that?
That is, it's kind of unusual to solicit that stuff, if people want to submit it, they're gonna submit it, and I think the board's gonna have to determine whether it's relevant, whether it's use the fancy legal term probative, like, can we, can we take that at face value, or do we, you know, the inspections?
Yeah, yeah, no, of course, understood. Um. That sounds good. So I think with that list that I just read, um, unless anybody has any, any questions or additions, I would move to table this application. Go ahead.
I don't have any questions on it.
Okay, so I would say I would move the table as application, um, to the next table of application pending the receipt of that information. Um, to the next planning board meeting. Do I need to read the list of information again as part of my motion?
Everybody heard that, it can be incorporated.
Great.
Perhaps, do you have any questions about the list or any clarification you need?
No, I'll just need it, you know, emailed to me, and then I'll get, uh, the representative from me drilling blasting on.
Then the only other thing I'd point out is, if it were my business and are faced with this whole list of stuff that I have to do, um, I might want to wait until the moratorium. If you choose you want to do that, I think you just let Terry know, and we just table it again.
I mean.
Until, until the, until the.
After the moratorium.
Next meeting after, yeah.
That's whether.
So that you could start gathering the stuff after the moratorium, rather than spend this whole month and then have the.
Have it out, can you?
I'd like to get a, I'd like to get a vote on the tabling.
Need a second.
You know, he doesn't have a second for his motion.
I have, I have moved, I have made the motion.
Gabe already made the motion, or?
I will second it.
Second it by Val.
Okay, any further discussion on the tabling? Let's take a vote on that, so we have it on record. Uh, Gabe?
Yes.
Uh, Travis?
Tra- wait, can.
All right, Val?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
And myself is a no. Is there any other members here? So it passes three to one, table it, till the next planning board meeting.
Okay.
Did I have a question, or?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, oh, you go ahead.
Sally Merchant?
Sally Richardson? Uh, we've got this, uh, public hearing coming up, is it possible for either the Select Board or the Board of, uh, the Select Board or the Planning Board to get somebody that knows all this stuff to, to be there at this public hearing we've got coming up? So we can explain things like blasting, uh, and things like that, that we've been discussing the news for.
That would have to come through the Select Board, because they have the budget.
Yeah, that's a budget, brother, so.
Could the Planning Board ask the Select Board to acquire such the expert, please?
I'm trying to provide an expert.
Travis is trying to provide an expert.
Different context, a different meeting.
Yeah.
This is, the public hearing, this is the moratorium line.
On June 3rd.
No, yeah, same.
For the moratorium, yeah.
June 3rd, and the public hearing, or the.
Yeah.
Okay.
You, uh, Christian, you had some questions about conflicts of interest?
I just want, before, before we get too deep into the going through findings, I wanna make sure, we can do this at the beginning of the next meeting, just if anybody feels they're biased about the application, if anybody has any business ties to Travis's business, or buys material from it, et cetera, we'd wanna get that on record before making any findings.
Do that right now.
I do that right now?
Sure.
Right?
What do you want to, fire away, who's, ask, ask the, ask the board members.
So I, I don't know if you guys do this as a matter of course on applications, but, um, just to review the definition of bias is you have a personal feeling about the applicant or the application that makes you feel that no matter what evidence is presented, you are inclined to approve it or deny it. Does anybody meet that description? And particularly, has anybody spoken out in the public? You know, more specifically to say they will deny this application?
Talk to anybody about it.
All right, has anybody talked off record to Travis about this application in any substance?
No, me.
Me.
Okay. And does anybody have any business relationship with Travis or buy materials from him?
I have not bought any material from Travis, no one dying. And I don't have any business, never done business with Travis.
Does any?
You're looking at me, the guy that, you, that's what this is being directed at.
Any member of the public have any concerns, or does Travis, Travis have any concerns about bias or conflict of interest? You just outlined. Does anyone in the public wanna lodge any complaints or concerns about bias or conflict of interest?
One more time.
Any of you as a butters want to lodge any concerns about conflict or bias on the part of the board members?
Just the butters?
Any, so the test is really, do you stand to be particularly harmed by the application because you're close to it?
I find Mr. Curtis seems to lean more in Travis's direction, and, uh, I, I have, he says he's currently restricted to production, I mean, if he's currently restricted, does the board have the authority to, to keep it that, to keep that restriction on?
Well, sure, this is an application to change that restriction, so the board could deny this, and then he's stuck with what he's got.
Okay. That's just my personal feeling, Mr. Curtis.
And Mr. Curtis has said for the record that he feels like he can weigh the evidence and the performance standards and make a reasoned determination without bias, is that right?
That's correct, I have no qualms either way about his business or any business in town, since I've been on the planning board. And, you know, you can question me about it, but I, I have no one way or the other, I just wanna follow the ordinances that we have and the way that we have always conducted business at our planning board meetings, and I wanna be fair to everybody. And I think I have been for the last nine years.
I can't speak for nine years, but just since October, I, I do, uh, and I kind of need to say it, I, I do get the feeling Mr. Curtis said that there's this, this alignment of business as opposed to the community, and I'm so sorry to say it, but I just, I just feel this, that that the residents, uh, you know, are, are not, as I said earlier, being protected, and we are not fitting those uses harmonious, harmoniously and competitively into our neighborhoods, I just I, I do see this, this alignment towards business.
So typically what we do when somebody raises an issue, and we've got an interested party raising an issue, I would like the board to take a vote on Mr. Curtis continuing, just as the motion would be, um, to you know, vote that Mr. Curtis should continue to participate, and then the board has no concern about bias. That's the form of the motion, and if you were voting against that, you would be voting that you're concerned about bias and would prefer that he abstain or recuse himself. Someone wanna make that motion and then take a vote?
Sure, I'll move that, um, I will, I'll, I'll move that I believe or should continue, I don't believe he has specific bias that is, meets the definition of bias for this case.
Okay. Second on that? Val?
Val's muted.
And a vote to find that.
I said I would second that.
Yeah, got it. And a vote to find that, um, Mr. Curtis has no bias that should prevent him continuing.
I think we have to do a roll call, right?
Yes, roll call.
Um, so, and Herb can't vote, so Val? What's your vote?
What was the question again, please?
The question is whether you feel Herb is biased on this application.
Are you voting to allow, we're voting right now to allow Herb to continue because we do not, because the motion is that we do not believe.
I just seconded, so I, I have to say yes, let it proceed.
Okay. Moira?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, so then he shall proceed over the objection. And I note that we've got four people and there's balance. So I think that's it, right?
I think that's it for this application.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can we have that question every time we have an application?
Yeah, it should really be the first thing you do before you get into discussion.
All right.
If you think about it, you wait through the whole discussion, that, that changes the course of the application in some ways, and then somebody declares like, oh, as it turns out, you know, I've been doing business with this guy for four years.
Understood.
There's nothing.
This application is tabled.
Tabled.
Um, that moves us onto the next, um, next, are you leaving the, are you leaving, leaving?
I am leaving, leaving unless there's a legal issue you need me for.
No, I have, I have a question, but it's not, it would be a question I would ask, um, not as part of the, should be, otherwise you'd be in trouble.
Absolutely.
And then we have one more item of business in front of us, which is for, uh, from, from McNabb. I apologize, I do not know how to pronounce his first name.
He's not here.
Okay. Doesn't seem like.
Is anybody here to speak for Mr. McNabb?
No.
Is Mr. McNabb here tonight?
Trying to get home.
Okay.
We wanna table him too, till the next week, next meeting, so we can speak to him, or do you wanna proceed with this performance standards, because he, we have to ask him questions.
We might as, we might as well table it, I think.
I think so.
I agree.
Um, I'll move to table this application until Ms. Mr. McNabb can be here in person.
I'll second that. I'll second the motion to table Mr. McNabb's.
All right.
We need to talk to him.
Anybody have any discussion on tabling it? All right, we're gonna call, call vote, Herb?
Table. Table it, go to table.
Yep. That was the vote again. Table, table, okay, unanimously, five, two, zero, that is tabled, so actually, for the next, next planning board meeting, uh, we know what they are. They are.
This planning board meeting.
Yeah, we're gonna do this one again. With more.
June 19th is a holiday, does that affect anybody?
What holiday?
It's June 20th, it's June, um, does not, but I think, I think what's, it's fine for me to hold the 19th for now. Does anybody else have any problem with that?
Let's, let's go with the 19th, it's a Thursday, and, um, we have to adjust, we can adjust earlier or later.
That sounds good, you gonna be here, you gonna be here in person, Herb?
Yes, I will be, I am working overtime because my relief is out on a medical, he's gotta have a corner.
All right, well.
And I gotta wait for another guy for the rest of the year, I'll be back. I've been gone seventy days now, I'm ready to go home.
All righty, so I think with all that, we can, wanna adjourn us, Herb?
Yeah, we can adjourn the meeting, uh, Tom, we got more, I think it's six forty, seven forty. I'm gonna.
Without objection.
Without.
That was good.
Turn. We did it. Okay.